Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 13th, 2023 meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. If y'all would stand with us, please. Our Commission Chaplain, Commissioner Romel McMurray, will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening as one body. I ask that we agree this evening to do what's best for the future of our county and our citizens. I ask that you hasten any anger, any bad feelings, or resentment after any decisions being made on this evening. I ask that we'll continue to be a unified body going forward. Thank you for continuing to watch over us in this chamber, and we thank you for those who protect and serve us all. Thank you for hearing this prayer and setting forth a positive outcome. For we know that the Bible speaks on unity. It says that we are all one people. There is an abundance of power when people are united. I ask that your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. I pray that there will be a perfect harmony and full agreement amongst us all. Let there be no factions or dissensions. I hope that we continue to live with humility, gentleness, unselfishness, patience, and to love one another because we are all brothers and sisters in Christ, no matter what the color of our skin is, no matter where we live, no matter what church we attend, no matter our wealth or political status. Let your love overflow within our homes, our schools, our workplace, and everywhere in between in our daily lives. Let others see Jesus in us all. As I close, let us remember that prayer is not to influence you, oh Lord, but rather to change the nature of those or the one who prays. It's in your name that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three white stars on a field of blue. God keep them strong and ever true. With this pride and love, we salute Tennessee. Thank you. You may be seated. This time I'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell to call the roll.
Commissioner Oliver.
Present.
Commissioner Piercey.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davison.
Here.
Commissioner Beverly.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Irvin.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Chairman Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner McMurray.
Here.
Commissioner Goach.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Yeah.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll call on, I'd aim, I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Goach for the reading of our March minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have reviewed those minutes. I know that you have also, and the clerks. I find everything to be in order. I move that we dispense with the reading and approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve our March meeting minutes. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, motion to approve carries. Thank you. This time we have-
Chairman Phillips.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Already approved. Did you say you wanted to amend the agenda? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Oliver, in what way?
I would like to present to the Commission a resolution in support of Governor Lee.
Call on you when we get to other business.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll move to suspend the rules and allow that resolution, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a special resolution of appreciation for Bob Ferris. I'll call on Commissioner, I'm sorry, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Commissioners, you're about to see a miracle tonight because we've made an opportunity to bring back into these chambers and to up here in this courthouse, we're bringing Colonel Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris up here to recognize him for the efforts he's done in Rutherford County and especially in the Rockvale community. So at this time, I'd like to ask if Jim Thompson would escort him up here, as well as his family that's here tonight, to come up here and join us. Now, as they're coming forward, let me explain when I say a miracle because he didn't know what he was coming here for tonight.
How did you know what he was coming for?
And because if he hadn't known what he was coming here for tonight, I don't know if we could have roped him tight enough to got him up here and been a part of this. But I gotta tell y'all, the Colonel here, I want y'all up here if you can.
I need to lean against something.
We'll let you sit right here and lean against the wheel if you want to. But I want to tell y'all about-
When you get to be 90 years old, you don't stand good.
I want to tell you an important thing about the Colonel right here. He has a blue and white golf cart that runs all over Concord, Rockvale out there, and he does an important part of our community, keeping things right. In fact, his family, I believe it was, had put a sign on that golf cart that says "Free Advice." And in that community, that's pretty much what he has done for many years right there. He's advised a lot of people on some very important issues. He's been a part of that community out there that's made it go. He's the cornerstone of Rockvale community, and that's what tonight we want to recognize him for. And I think when you see and hear what I'm going to talk about right here within this resolution, you'll find out some things about Bob Ferris that you may have never ever known, and some things I found out that I didn't know because he just doesn't tell those many things about himself. So at this time, I want to read a resolution of recognition and congratulations to Colonel Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris. Whereas Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris was born in Rutherford County, Tennessee, on September the 22nd, 1932, and being the youngest of 10 children, all boys, belonging to D. Witt and Nettie Woodson Ferris, living on Snail Shell Cave Road in the Rockvale community; and whereas he spent his boyhood growing up in a family that operated a sawmill and farm, giving him the opportunity to become the man he is today. During those growing up days, he had a pet mule named Mike that he rode everywhere and developed a love for fishing that carried on into his adult life, where he fished many bass tournaments, run trot lines, and enjoyed jug fishing on Nickajack and the Tennessee River. And whereas Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris graduated from Rockvale High School and later graduated from Drawns Business College and Middle Tennessee State College, receiving an Army commission through ROTC. And whereas Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris attended Officer's Canada School, completed a 30-year military career with the United States Army, served in Korea, served two tours in Vietnam, where also during many of these missions as a pilot, was shot down in the jungles of Vietnam and later rescued due to the efforts of a former MTSU college buddy. Hearing his distress calls and recognizing his voice, sent help to his friend. And whereas Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris returned back from war to serve at the Pentagon, the War College, as a military advisor to the President of the United States, a member of the Review Board of Court Marshals, and was decorated with many military honors, retiring as a full Army Colonel. And whereas following service to his country, he returned home to Rockvale to then serve the people of his community. He began Ferris Tax Service doing taxes for individuals locally. He was also selected to serve on the Rutherford County Planning Commission and served there until 2010. He is also an MTSU alumnus and a true blue, as you would want to meet anywhere. And whereas Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris has always been a strong supporter of his Rockvale community, those who live there know he has been the guiding force of the Rockvale Ruin Club for many years. He has seen to the building of the community pavilions on the community center grounds for families to use, worked in the ballfield concession stand, cheered on many youth teams that played with the support of the Ruin Club, and he's a mainstay of the oldest annual Fourth of July picnic celebration in Tennessee, which if an Uncle Sam had to be chosen for the event, he would be it. And whereas Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris has experienced numerous adventures in his life, but his biggest supporter came from his high school sweetheart and wife, Sarah Lyons Ferris. They were married for 56 years until her passing. They had three children, Tony, Bob, and Cindy Caldwell, along with two grandchildren. Whereas Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris has given so much back to his community, his country, and his county, in so many ways with many of them being quietly done in the spirit of this man as he has lived his life as a soldier, a Bible school teacher, husband, father, grandfather, county servant, and friend to many. Now therefore, the Rutherford County Commission, at its regular session on this 13th day of April 2023, do hereby recognize, congratulate, and thank Colonel Robert "Bob" Irwin Ferris for his service to our country and our county. Mr. Chairman, I so move the passage of this resolution.
We have a motion.
Second.
Unanimous second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. Having graduated from MTSU in 1955, I'm told by General Og that I'm the oldest living ROTC graduate of the university. So thank you very much, and I've enjoyed life, and life's been a blessing for me, and I hope it will be for you too.
There's a lot of us that probably have a story about Bob Ferris. Those of us that served on the Planning Commission for a long time has several stories about Bob Ferris, one that's probably not really all that interesting to many folks. But I've had the same person to cut my hair for over 40 years, and I thought that was a record until she told me that Bob Ferris had been going to her longer than me. So, Bob, congratulations. Just want you to know that we, as a Commission, and we as a county, love you. Thank you very much. This time, I'll call on our Rutherford County historian Greg Tucker to make some comments. I've been looking forward to this for a while, Greg.
Bob Ferris is a difficult act to follow. He's been one of my best historical sources for almost 20 years now. Thank you, Bob. I appreciate the opportunity to share a little local history with you tonight. I want to focus on the fact that a county commissioner today is a product of evolution. And I'm not talking about your uncles or your monkeys. We're talking about, well, let's go back to 1789, when our founders ratified and approved the U.S. Constitution and exposed to the world a new form of government. They called it separation of powers. They had three branches of government charged in such a way that they could act as a check and balance and avoid any single one from becoming dictatorial or too authoritative. That was in 1789. In 1803, the Tennessee Legislature chartered Rutherford County and went the opposite direction. I assume that they were looking for efficiency and simplicity, but they defined one body, seven magistrates and a presiding judge, invested all administrative, executive, legislative, and judicial powers in that one body. If you, well, frankly, under the way it was operating, they had appointive powers over all the other offices, positions in government, all the other members of the county government served at their pleasure. In fact, you couldn't die without getting it approved by the quarterly court, and you couldn't purchase property and have title to it without going to the quarterly court. Probably one of the most curious powers was the quarterly court, the seven magistrates and one judge, had the power to bring an action, say for a felony, they could make the criminal rule. They could charge the felon. They could appoint the prosecutor. They could appoint the jury. They then could preside over the trial and assuming a finding against the defendant, they could set the penalty. This continued for six years, and apparently the inequity of it began to be recognized. And in 1810, the power to bring a suit and impanel the jury, jury trials, felony matters, were vested in a new statewide circuit court, taking that away from the magistrates. In 1830, the Chancery Court system was developed and took the power over probate, in other words, who was dead and entitled to pass on, pass things on, and the powers over land and the acquisition and transfer of land were transferred to the Chancery Court. Still though, the quarterly court had authority over all misdemeanors, fines, penalties, executive administration, and was still appointing such as the sheriff, who served at the pleasure of the court. Finally, the constitutional amendments, state constitutional amendments, following the Civil War, created what we now call the constitutional positions and took that away from the quarterly court to give some independent powers to these independent executive functions. But as we came into the 20th century, we still had magistrates sometimes called justices of the peace or JPs. They had the authority over all misdemeanor, could assess fines, could collect penalties, take fees, set fees, and set up their own schedules. In fact, there was what we call, looking back, shade tree justice. A JP in one part of the county could act on a misdemeanor claim and rule as he felt appropriate, and a JP in another part of the county could take exactly the same type of case and rule just the opposite direction. The JPs were not, in most cases, had absolutely no legal training. There was no legal training required to be a JP, a justice of the peace. In the 1930s, some leading business people and some of the media decided that there needed to be a change, that this arbitrary authority needed to be dealt with. The World War II set aside any attempts at that time, but following World War II, these interests recruited a young veteran just returning from overseas, persuaded him to run for the state legislature, recognizing that it was going to take a statutory enactment to change things. The 1946 election of our state representatives, this young veteran prevailed. He ran against a couple of the sitting JPs who were trying to move up. He prevailed. The day after he was sworn in, he submitted to the state legislature a proposed private act, which took all of the judicial authority, all of the appointive authority, away from the JPs, changed forever in a very dramatic and significant way the role of the JP. Who was this young veteran? His name was Raleigh Holden. Two years later, he announced he was not going to run for reelection because he decided he must have alienated at least two-thirds of the political establishment and chose to come back to the square and start a new business, which today has been there 75 years, Holden Hardware. I think we can say in light of the efforts of Raleigh Holden, Raleigh Holden, Sr., that county commissioners today are truly public servants, or at least I don't know how you can make a living at it. Thank you.
The more I think I know, the least I find out that I do know. Thank you, Greg. This time, we have two people that have signed up for public comments.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Certainly is a pleasure to stand at the same podium as the Colonel. I might come by and ask for some free advice here after the meeting, if you're open to it. Good evening. My name is Mike Claussen, and I am the general manager of Middle Point Landfill. As you all well know, about two weeks ago, a part of our community was significantly impacted when a tornado touched down in Reedyville, leaving behind a path of destruction in Rutherford and Cannon Counties. Although we have played just a very small part, I wanted you to know, as the Commission, how Middle Point has been a community partner in storm cleanup and disaster relief and that we are eager to help further in any way we can. When Bishop Wagoner called me two Sundays ago, and we learned about the incredible efforts the county and Bishop's Solid Waste Department were taking to help support our neighbors in Reedyville with cleanup, and watching them work, it truly was a fantastic effort that should be commended, we immediately offered assistance to help ensure that debris the county was picking up had a rapid response disposal destination. Beginning that next morning, Monday, at 3:00 a.m., we opened our facility to accept all disaster debris delivered by the county with extended facility hours before open and after close, dedicated for county-only access. This allowed convenience centers to maintain normal operations without overflow while still addressing the important needs of our impacted community. To aid Rutherford and Cannon Counties with disaster relief funding requests, we've tracked the quantity of storm debris received at Middle Point delivered by the county. So far, we've received over 1,400 tons of debris totaling just over $100,000 in disposal cost. In the event the disaster relief funding the county is seeking does not come through, we are fully prepared to absorb this entire cost at zero financial impact to the county. There's a lot of noise out there about Middle Point, but this is one example of how we are a unique and valuable asset to the county with the means and the desire to support our community. We're committed to the county, we're an active member of the community, and we are definitely driven to helping our neighbors just get back on their feet, just like you all are in the county's solid waste department. We've made a lot of progress out at Middle Point, and if you haven't taken us up on coming out to visit us, I know a lot of you have, and we appreciate that. We welcome you out. We'd love to show you some of the strides we've made. And if there's anything else we can do to support the county in this situation or any other, please reach out and please ask us. We would absolutely love to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claussen.
My name is Lisa Kay. Good evening, Chairman Phillips, Commissioners, and Mayor Carr. I'm speaking to you today as a private citizen. I know I'm a black woman, even though I'm not a biologist. Since I only have three minutes to speak, I'll forego singing my rendition of "God Bless America," or the National Anthem that I've performed at several honor flights and various other events. My dad, who's in heaven now, retired from U.S. Steel and was also a pastor. He taught me to love God, family, and country. Even though I have 20 years of communications experience, including 10 years of radio broadcasting, it was extremely challenging to put my thoughts down about this topic, and I wondered if I should remain silent. I vehemently oppose the Wayside exhibit that recently passed the Property Management Committee on March 23rd. I also oppose making Juneteenth a state holiday, but those comments should be shared with a different body. Instead of having the Bill of Sale of Negroes and Slaves encased in concrete outside the courthouse, how about an exhibit inside the museum where more context can be given and it serves as an educational tool lest we forget? History is important, however, it seems with the riots of Marxist groups in 2018 with no prosecutions. There's been a push to tear down statues of certain historic figures, demand random blanket apologies from strangers on the street, renew calls for reparations, segregated graduations, and most recently disobey Tennessee Legislature rules and then cry racism. The current importance placed on race is far too similar to the times this memorial depicts. We're falling woefully short of the admirable goal of judging one another by the content of their character instead of the color of their skin. It's my opinion, memorials of this nature get people in a constant mindset of the evil mistakes of our history as a nation. It makes some of my black brothers and sisters have a perpetual state of victimization that leads to thinking all white people are the cause of problems without factoring in black-on-black crime, lack of fathers in the home, the alarming rate of black women that have abortions, and degrading rap and hip-hop artists that use the N-word. It makes some of my white brothers and sisters lament at the actions of the people of that time. This drives a wedge between people when we should be focusing on coming together. Memorials like this insidiously foster a spirit of strife and division that cripples and erodes from within. If this passes, I do not want to walk by a reminder of the horrific auctions when I'm conducting county business. Please vote no if this makes it to the full Commission for a vote.
There's a resolution that'll be coming out of Chairman Allen McAdoo a little bit later on. It was regrettably left off of the agenda by mistake, but we'll ask for a suspension of the rules to consider that resolution when we get to that committee report. Thank you, Lisa. Elections and confirmations. I think we've got a few minutes left. Well, we've got two minutes left. Let's skip elections and confirmations and go to consent agenda. We've probably got enough time to do that. I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Goach for the resolution to approve our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The consent agenda has been reviewed. Everything is appropriate. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? For this, we'll be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes, one abstain.
Thank you. It's about 6:30. It's time to do our public hearings. I'll call on the Director of our Planning Department, Doug Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. We have three-
We have three applications for your consideration tonight. Two are rezonings, one is an ordinance amendment, so we'll start first with the two zoning applications. The first is by Craig Koch. This is by Clyde Rowntree with Huddleston Steel Engineering. It's located along Baker Road. Property is currently zoned residential medium density, or RM. They're asking for commercial services zoning for about 2.08 acres. As I stated, the applicant would like to zone this property to commercial services. There are no concrete development plans at this time, so you will not find a concept plan included with your agenda packets. Some ideas that have been mentioned to staff are a possible expansion of the existing mini storage. That property surrounds the property under consideration right now. Also, the possibility of just general retail use as a separate standalone use. This property does have direct access to Baker Road. Depending on how the property is developed, it could just share an access with the adjacent mini warehouse facility, which is accessed off of Old Nashville Highway. We have not required a traffic study at this time simply because we don't know exactly what it's going to be. However, that ability still exists if this is approved tonight and we do see a site plan at the Planning Commission. That would be something we would want to take a look at depending on the use. Landscaping, of course, would have to meet our county standards, as would the performance standards for noise, dust, things like that. During the public hearing, there were comments made about a possible increased traffic if the site is developed independently of the existing mini warehouse building that's adjacent to the property. There was also some concerns about the effects on property values. The Planning Commission also had some questions about sewer access, which there isn't any on this property, and the amount of septic soil on the property. Staff stated, again, sewer wasn't available, and the size of the site would limit the intensity of any kind of development just because of the fact that you would have to take into account the fact that septic soils are required, the fact that they'd have to do parking, that they would have to do drainage detention, and those kind of things. Traffic was also discussed, especially at the intersection of Baker Road and Old Nashville Highway. Again, we reiterated that a traffic study could be required should this application be approved and a site plan submitted to our office for review. After that discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. I see the applicant's representative is also here, if there's any questions of him.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner James.
On this one, without having any idea what concept plan they might come up with in the future, it feels to me like it might be, and not wanting to do a traffic study until you figure out, it feels like we're just kind of giving a, kind of, you're shooting at it blind, blindfolding yourself and taking aim and hoping you hit it right. If they just get this approved, and then they end up doing something that needs a traffic study, what recourse is down the road will force them to follow what the traffic study says?
Well, that has to be part of the site plan submitted. If they were to submit a site plan, there's regulations in our ordinance to allow us to require the traffic study before any action of the Planning Commission for any kind of a site plan would be approved.
I was here at the initial meeting with it, and I would have liked to have seen a traffic study. I understand it wasn't technically required at that stage. I just would have liked to have seen it because that is kind of an interesting intersection at times of the day.
Well, the problem-
Not knowing what they could possibly want to do or go up to do.
Right. Well, and I understand where you're going. The problem with the zoning they're asking for, depending on the use of the property, that could affect what the traffic study is going to say. You know, some use, especially if it's an expansion of some sort of a mini warehouse, you're not going to have much of a traffic impact from that. If it were going to be something like a Dollar General, or if it was going to be something like a Subway or something like that, that's going to have an increased traffic. We'd be kind of, like you were talking about shooting, kind of shooting blind, we wouldn't have known what we were really shooting at at that point because there's no use identified yet.
All right. I guess I'm just uneasy with the unknown at this level.
I will say, again, the entire site, it's surrounded by that existing mini warehouse, and across the streets also zoned commercially, albeit it's a commercial neighborhood directly across the street. That's a lighter classification, commercial services. So really, when you look at the zoning, that's really just squaring up the commercial zoning in that area. So I think that played into the decision as well.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for planning item REZ 23-006. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner McMurray.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second item tonight is a rezoning request by Mike Chitari. This is for Murfreesboro Investment Group, located along Barfield Road and Veterans Parkway. The existing zoning, similar to the last application, is residential medium density, RM, and they are also asking for commercial services of this site, which is a little over four acres. The applicant would like, again, to rezone this site in order to open a retail establishment, or possibly several retail establishments. Proposed buildings on the concept plan that is included on your iPads, it's actually included in your agenda packet, but it's also a standalone file. It's a pretty large file, might be easier just to open by itself, so both of those are on your iPads. They're showing the buildings at approximately 5,000 square feet each. The applicant's proposing a gas station convenience market closer to the corner of Veterans Parkway and Barfield Road. That is the primary use at this point. Other uses could follow as time goes on. Again, I referenced the concept plan. It's not a binding plan, since this is not an application for a plan development, but it does give the Commissioners an idea of how the applicant would like to move forward with development of the property. You can see access shown on both Barfield Road and Veterans Parkway, as well as screening along the boundaries. The intersection of these two streets is signalized. During the pre-application meeting, staff informed the applicant's representative that we would expect traffic improvements along Barfield Road, similar to those that were required for a rezoning just across Veterans Parkway to the north, which included some turn lane improvements, lane widening, et cetera. Veterans Parkway itself is already a five-lane road, which does include a continuous center turn lane. Of course, with any development, should this be approved, an engineered site plan would have to be submitted to our office for our review, and this site plan would have to demonstrate all compliance with parking, access, the landscaping that was discussed a moment ago, as well as our performance standards. Again, going back to traffic at the intersection of Barfield Road and Veterans Parkway, that was discussed at length at the Planning Commission. Part of the subject property that the applicant's asking for rezoning tonight was actually purchased to allow the access point along Barfield Road to be as far to the south, far away from that intersection, as possibly could be. The developer will have to work with the city of Murfreesboro for any improvements at Veterans Parkway, especially along Veterans Parkway, due to the Southwest Loop Agreement for any work along that road. The Commission did ask if a neighborhood meeting had been held before submitting the application. There was none, but the applicant's representative did say that they hadn't received any calls, and as staff, we really didn't receive any at the office either. So after discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant's representative, Matt Taylor, is also here.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for planning item REZ 23-007. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Kush.
Mr. Chair, as District 7 Commissioner, I have had no questions or concerns, positive or negative, regarding this piece of property. I would make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ 23-007. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. One final item for your consideration tonight. This is an ordinance amendment to our zoning ordinance. This is regarding revisions to Chapter 10, which is the flood hazard district, and we are the applicants for this. The Corps of Engineers and FEMA recently completed an update to the flood insurance rate maps for Rutherford County. These are the maps that we use to determine whether properties are located within the 100-year floodplain or not. Consequently, our flood ordinance, which is, again, Chapter 10 of our zoning ordinance, has to be updated to reflect the most recent model ordinance from FEMA and from the Corps, and the updated firm panel maps and their effective dates. The model has been, and is included on your iPads, it's about 30-some pages. I'd be more than happy to go into every single aspect of that if you'd like me to and read it, but I don't think you want that. So if you've got specific questions, I'm here, as well as our county engineers here to help answer any questions on that. We did have to update the model just a little bit. Some of the county's requirements are a little stricter than what FEMA requires, some things like the first-floor elevations on residential units. FEMA requires the minimum to be a foot above base flood elevation. We actually require the base flood, I'm sorry, the minimum pad elevation to be a foot above the base flood, and then the finished floor, two feet above that. So we went through and made sure that our standards were being reflected in the model. We're allowed to be more restrictive than what FEMA does require. I would like to stress that there are no changes being made to the way we currently enforce our floodplain regulations with these changes. These amendments are really more housekeeping in nature, in our opinion. We do have a mandate from the Corps and from FEMA to have our flood ordinance updated by May 3rd to remain in good standing with the program, which is why you see these amendments before you tonight. Staff did bring these changes to the Planning Commission at two meetings, first at February 27th to just discuss the overall intent of what we were doing, and then at a public hearing on March 13th. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of these amendments by a unanimous vote. Really, the largest changes in here, when you look at the maps, there's several of them that have new effective dates because they've been updated. That's one of the largest things that we changed in our ordinance. But like I said, as far as the day-to-day administration of the floodplain program, there really will be no changes. So again, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any- Commissioner P.
Having been on planning, I know we've gone through a lot of changes there. One of the worst problems that I saw as a planning commissioner, we approved something that was prone to flooding. You know, we had a certain elevation, and I realize that's changed several times. But my main question is, the air conditioning units that are under these houses are, a lot of times, our regulations allowed the water to come up but not get to the floor joists, but at the same time, it would get in the air conditioning units and in the ductwork. Do these new regulations help avoid that problem?
I believe they do. I'm going to say, and obviously if I'm saying something wrong, Mr. Hughes is here to kind of clarify. As I recall, the air conditioning units and things, they're required to be a foot, one foot above the base flood elevation. And the ductwork and everything inside, we also want that to be protected as well the same. So yes, to answer your question. Now, as I tell a lot of people, and I'm talking to them on the phone, if it rains enough, we all live in a floodplain, whether or not we're in one or not. But for those areas that are especially vulnerable to that, yes, we want to see those, the air conditioning units and ductwork outside of that so that they don't get affected. Correct.
Other questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for item ORD 23-001. This is a recommended amendment to our zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak on this suggested change, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'll call on our Planning Chair Pettis Reed for the recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that they be approved with staff comments.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve ORD 23-001, which is a change to our zoning ordinance. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi, any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you. Getting back to our agenda, item I, elections and confirmations. I'll call on our staring Vice Chair, Pettis Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations, item number one, election of notaries. Listings may be found on your iPads. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
I have a motion and a second to approve the notaries. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve these notaries, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item two, steering would like to confirm Ariel Cooper to the position of Judicial Commissioner. This is a four-year term that will expire April 2027. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to confirm Ms. Cooper as a Judicial Commissioner. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Item three, steering also wishes to confirm Adam T. Dodd to the Rutherford County Records Commission. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second to confirm Adam Dodd to the Records Commission. Any questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Mr. Chairman, this concludes the business of elections and confirmations.
Thank you. I don't see any unfinished business to take care of, so we'll move right along. Item M on our agenda is reports from our standing committees. First up is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. I'll call on the Chairman, Robert P.
The first item on our agenda are general fund budget amendments. The first one is item A1. And be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows for the county clerk's office, and this is for mail and mailing license plates, unassigned fund balance, a decrease of $60,000, and increased expenditures for postal charges of $60,000. Under other charges, this is coming out of the mayor's budget, unassigned fund balance of $6,000 for vehicle parts, $6,000 for a vehicle that we had to replace the transmission in. Resolve this 13th day of April 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Motion and a second. Seeing none, for this, we'll be on the board, so please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
21 yes.
Motion passes.
Continuing under the general fund budget amendments, item A2, this is from the Fire Department. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows for fire rescue, a decrease in unassigned fund balance of $39,984, decreased expenditures communication, $10,380, evaluation and testing, $13,000, drug and medical supplies, $10,927, instructional supply and materials, $3,993, utilities, $8,395, with increased expenditures of overtime, $37,300, excuse me, $500, social security, $2,325, pensions, $3,810, employee Medicare, $544, M&R for maintenance and repair for vehicles, $35,000, administration equipment, $5,000, data processing equipment, $2,500. Resolve this 13th day of April 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second to approve this amendment. This will also be on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes, one no.
Motion passes.
Next item is item B, drug fund budget amendment from the Sheriff's Department. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the drug control fund be amended as follows, drug enforcement, increased expenditures, in-service training, $15,000, maintenance and repair vehicles, $10,000, and a decrease in expenditures of restricted fund balance of $25,000. Resolve this 13th day of April 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve. Discussion. This will also be on the board. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
Item M1C, resolution be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the education, educational capital projects fund be amended according to the schedule attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, resolved this 13th day of April 2023. And Mr. Chairman, this is actually moving $150,000 to replace or repair the Rocky Fork Middle School's fire alarm system. I so move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty-one yes.
Motion passes.
I think we finally got to the one most people are here tonight for. Item DMD, and I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution that came out of our Budget Committee. Whereas there is a need to plan, design, construct, and renovate schools due to the growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education has anticipated the future needs of the school system, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the funds of the design, site development, construction, improvements, and equipping of the following projects at the estimated cost as approved by the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee. And I won't go through all that, but the Oakland site and the Riverdale site for a total of $117,885,200 was approved. Whereas the funds in the amount of $1,112,500 were transferred from other projects in April 2022 for design of the aforementioned schools, and funds in the amount of $116,772,700 will be funded from a future bond issue. Therefore, be it resolved by Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the funding for the design, site development, construction, improvements, and equipment of the aforementioned projects in an estimated amount of $117,885,200 will be authorized with funds of $1,112,500 coming from the transfer from other projects for design in April 2022, and funds in the amount of $116,772,700 coming from a future bond issue. Resolve this 13th day of April 2023. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Chairman Protem Tregeuch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, before we start deliberations on this, there's something that we need to do. When the Budget Committee voted to send a recommendation for the Riverdale and Oakland additions, but not the Smyrna addition, Commissioner Harris asked Dr. Sullivan a question, and I would like to read, talk about that from the minutes of the Budget Committee. Commissioner Harris asked Dr. Sullivan to evaluate the motion, and this is the motion that I made. And with his sad little face, Dr. Sullivan stated, "It appears to be a fractured school system." He went on to say, "He is not getting any additional growth seats in the north end of the county and can't rezone the area to accommodate the population in the area without busing students for over an hour." He stated the only option would be to add more portables to the Smyrna High School. And after thinking about his comments of a fractured school system, several days after the budget meeting, I determined that Dr. Sullivan was correct. So to clean this up, I am amending the motion to include $38,420,058 to include the Smyrna High School addition.
We have an amendment to the original motion.
Second.
Many seconds. I believe Commissioner Anthony Johnson was jumping up and down, so you probably ought to put him in. Any questions or any comments on the amendment to the motion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'm Anthony Johnson, Commissioner for 11th District.
Commissioner Johnson, if you could hold your comments for a minute. Mayor Carr is asked to make a particular comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies, Commissioner. So Commissioners, we're all in an extremely difficult situation. We have a $64 million deficit, as you know, that we all inherited. We have a, just to be candid, we have a Tennessee General Assembly that for years you have, this body has asked their help in remediating a situation that is inequitable and unfair in comparison to other counties and other cities across the state. We have asked for and implored their help. It has gone ignored again. We have, according to the latest Tennessee Comptrollers report, from 2020 to 2022, Rutherford County is the fastest-growing county in the state, the 43rd fastest-growing county in the nation, and it continues unabated. And so we're left, this body and the mayor's office are left with the unimitable task of how do we pay for that? Because honestly, we have extremely, and you know this, we've talked about it for months now, we have very limited resources, and that is truly unfortunate. And this isn't a situation, Mr. Chairman, completely of our doing. Some of this, unfortunately, is out of our hands, how we got to this place. But we are at this place nonetheless, and a very difficult decision is in front of us. But what I want to share with you, and I have considerable thought and prayer, we cannot hold our children accountable for the decision, even though it's difficult, that we have to make. And so I'm asking this body, I implore you, do not cut the children off in Smyrna and the northern part of the county from the resources that we, that they need, that we committed to giving to them when we took this oath of office. It's that important. I don't like the idea of raising property taxes, but everybody knows that is where we're headed. And I hate that. But our choices and options are limited, extremely limited. Nonetheless, we have a responsibility and obligation to our children to make sure they receive the best education they can get. And I think any half-measure, by only funding Oakland and Riverdale without funding Smyrna, is just that, it is a half-measure. And they need the same opportunities in Smyrna that they're getting in Murfreesboro with Riverdale and Oakland. And so I ask you to accept Commissioner Gooch's motion and the second, and vote to affirm by reestablishing the Smyrna funding. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're Mayor Carr. My apologies, Commissioner Anthony, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor. I was afraid I was going to regret yielding, but I'm really happy with what you just said. I'm breathing easier. Usually, I sit over here, and it's very cold over here. Tonight, I am hot. Yeah, it's very warm in here. Do you know why it's warm in here? Smyrna showed up. This is Smyrna. They showed up for this. They're supporting the community and the schools. Town Council, Town Manager, appreciate you being here. Regret the mayor couldn't be here, but she had something to come up, so we're praying for her. But Smyrna High School has 11 trailers. I don't call them portables, they're trailers. They're not underpinned. They're 45 degrees when they walk in there in the wintertime. No matter how much heat they put in there, in the mornings, it's 45 degrees. That's cold. You have five of them sitting on the riverbank, creek bank. They have problems with snakes, possums, skunks. If you've ever had a problem with wasp at your house, believe me, they have a bigger problem with those portables that are not underpinned. That alone, what I just mentioned, is enough danger to get them out of there. Trailers, they blow apart during a heavy storm, not only a tornado, just a heavy storm. I agree wholeheartedly with the mayor. It's a tough decision, but it's a decision that we're up here to make, we're to do a job, and that's to take care of this community and move it forward. But I'm not only warm because of this room being warm, I'm warm because of Smyrna support. I appreciate you coming out. And Commissioners, I'll just try to make it short. You know, it's short and simple. We need these trailers moved out. We need our kids into portables. And I'm not picking one school over another. I haven't done this this whole time. It's all three or none to me. All three or none. We don't pull one out. One's not any more important than the other. Smyrna is to me, but I'm a county commissioner, and I live in the district that Smyrna High School is in, so I wholeheartedly support it. But if it was the other way around, I wouldn't have pulled Riverdale or Oakland out. So I appreciate your concerns and your vote to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Anyone else? Any comments? Commissioner Rather.
Very short, Chairman. I'm not going to repeat what Mayor Carr and Commissioner Johnson said because I agree with every comment that's been made. Part of my district is in Smyrna. I don't look at Smyrna, Echoville, Laverne, it's Rutherford County. And number one, our kids, which has already been echoed by those two, I think about teachers, administrators, parents, that thought at one time, not long ago, that we were doing all three. And to change it in the middle game is not right. The kids are number one. But behind that's teachers. And we are short teachers, just like Sheriff's Office is short. We have to do this, and I voted for all three, and I'm not going to change that vote ever. I'll stand behind that vote for the groups that I talked about, kids being number one. But there's others to consider. We have done things in the last five, four and a half years I've been a commissioner where things were difficult, and you have said that things are going to be really tough the next several years. But we've always found ways to do other things. So I support this 1,000%.
Thank you, Commissioner Rather. Anyone else? Commissioner Sharino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Me too. You know, I'm just happy today, I'm so wonderful, because last week, and early this morning, I turned on the paper, D&amp;J, has my name on it, and they said, "He opposed." I didn't, I would know because I didn't see the name of Smyrna High School appear last week. That is my reason. I didn't hate education. I mean, I love education. I worked for the school system for a long time, and in my country too, and here in Rutherford County. As a guidance counselor back then, I went to different schools in Rutherford County, including Smyrna, Laverne, and so on and so forth. So I'm so happy to hear that the name of Smyrna High School being added forward today. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Commissioner Sharino, Commissioner Reed.
I noticed this evening that the Chairman of our Budget Committee is wearing a purple tie. I don't know how many of you noticed that. And I think you know where his heart is tonight, but I'm wearing a blue and white tie. That's because I had the Colonel here tonight. He's 90 years old, and I'm still scared to death of him because we have that much respect for him. But I'd have to say, I've had people call me from Smyrna about this particular topic. And I've had to tell a lot of them, I said, "You know, Rockvale has the newest high school that's been built," I think so far. And it's given us the opportunity to bring a community back to life by having a high school. And I know what a high school will do for a community. The only thing is, it gives us the opportunity to have to play Smyrna again in a lot of athletics opportunities. Because I had to do that, and just being frightened of the Colonel, I respect Smyrna too, because I had to do the same thing growing up at Rockvale, because we always played Smyrna. But I also have to tell you that three schools were added on to last year, and they were just moved into this past spring. Two of those were Rockvale Elementary and Rockvale Middle School. So how can I stand here and say no to Smyrna? Because my community's been helped in some way. But I think it's just vital that, as the mayor has said right here, we're going to have to do this. Portables, as I mentioned, that I have the newest high school within this county moved in 2019. Ladies and gentlemen, we have 10 portables at that high school. Pushing what, Trey, close to 2,500 in that high school? Built for 2,300? That's our growth. That's what we've got. But when it comes storm time, you have to move them out of those portables? And where do you take 300 to 400 children and stack them inside of a school? It's tough. And there's nothing we can do but what we're going to have to do here tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Anyone else? Commissioner Kush.
I'm going to come around so I can see the audience. My statements are a different path. I'm in the construction business and the engineering business, as some of my other co-commissioners are here too. And we have a tendency to look downfield a little bit. Construction costs, as you all have seen, for these three school additions are extremely high because the most expensive construction you can ever do is add on to an existing building. I don't think anybody would argue that. To try and match grades, to try and tie into existing utilities, try and match roof lines, it's expensive, and contractors make you pay for that experience. So costs are high because expansion is something contractors really don't like to do. They want new ground. They want to start from fresh. I say that because as fast as this county is growing, we need to be looking downfield about what our next move is because I don't want to keep putting lipstick on a pig and have the same conversation a couple of years from now about the portables on a new school, relatively new school. We need to be looking what our next choice is and not keep spending exorbitant amounts of money for expansion. So that, as, in construction and engineering, that's my beef. We're throwing a lot of extra money at expansion. I want us to really be looking downfield at new building and what we need to do. The second thing I want us to consider, and The second thing I want us to consider, and I think a task group needs to be formed with the city and county mayor, the attorneys, the Chair of Health and Ed. Last year, the county gave the city nearly $35 million to subsidize their schools. In some cases, it's like a double taxation. Why is the city of Murfreesboro even in the school business? Why are we subsidizing that? We need to have a conversation with them. We don't want their debt, but maybe we need to sit down and look about taking over that school system. I'm not saying it's the right thing to do, but smarter people need to sit in a room together and see the pros and cons of that. But I hate to just, last year, give $35 million to the City of Murfreesboro Schools of our county taxpayer unincorporated folks who will never have a child in the city school system paying taxes for that. The other thing that strikes me odd is, you talked, somebody just a minute ago, talked about this teacher shortage. It was Commissioner Rather. Well, we find that we're cannibalizing ourselves with fighting over robbing city school teachers and county school teachers. And, you know, we want her, we want him, we're paying higher wages, but yet all the wages are coming out of county taxes. We're paying that. So it may be a point in time where we need to be under one system instead of two different school districts. So I'd like a task group to be formed to take a look at that, because I just hate to keep giving money away. For instance, Riverdale, the expansion, city has no problem telling us that the roads need to be widened and we need turn lanes there, and we got to pay for that. We have no say. They just say, "Here's the invoice, and we got to pay it." I'm kind of tired of that. So, thank you very much.
You, Commissioner Kusch. Anyone else? Seeing no one will be voting on the amendment to the original motion, and that amendment consists of adding Smyrna High to the three, to make it three schools that will be adjusted. And for this, will actually be on the board, I'm sorry, Commissioner Oliver.
Mr. Chairman, can we get Director Smith to go over again how we're going to pay for this? Like, can I just get that again?
Might be better answered by a county attorney right here.
I forgot my calculator.
The next item on the agenda, we'll take care of how we're going to pay for this, but I'll go ahead and touch on it briefly. The new total tonight, and I'll get these amounts to the clerk, but the new total will be $156,305,200, just for the record. But the next item on the agenda is an interim funding resolution until we go to the bond market. So hopefully that will get us by for a few months. That is the plan. That'll allow the county time to look at any projects that it is looking at as well. But this will be funded through a future bond issuance.
One more question. Now, going to the bond market, is that something that's traditionally done every year?
Whenever we need to. I mean, traditionally, the last several years, we've built a school almost every year, so yes, but we go as needed.
Okay, because this is not going to be it. We've got budget season coming up, we've got more money that's going to be requested.
Correct. That's one of the reasons for an interim funding resolution. We're essentially going to borrow from ourselves for about three months, or two to three months. You'll notice that interim funding resolution is for $35 million. That will allow the school system, if this were to pass, to go ahead and sign contracts tomorrow. And so that way, that their bids are still good, they can go ahead and get started, and then we can still work on our priorities and work through the budget on the county side during that time.
Thank you.
Once again, we're voting on the amendment to the original motion, and for this will be on the board. I'll ask that you please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Madam Clerk, if you would list the vote, please.
18 yes, 3 no.
Amendment to the original motion passes. Now, we're on the original motion as amended, which will be to fund the reconstruction and the addition to the three high schools, Riverdale, Oakland, and Smyrna. Any questions or comments? For this, will also be on the board, so if you would, please cast your vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I do have, I do have some questions.
I'm sorry. Commissioner James?
I hope for all three and $156 million. Is it possible to suspend the rules, to ask some questions to the superintendent or trailer, if one of them is present?
Say that again.
Would it be possible to suspend the rules, to speak to our superintendent or trailer about these, since I don't sit on Health and Ed or Budget and Finance?
It's, yes, it's possible. I would need a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Have a motion to suspend the rules to allow our school superintendent to speak. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules, please say aye.
No.
Opposition?
No.
We're going to be on the board?
No.
We're going to be on the board, okay? This is for a motion to suspend the rules to allow our superintendent to speak. So if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
12 yes, 9 no.
Motion to suspend the rules passes. Superintendent Sullivan? Right, one on my part. The motion to suspend the rules requires a 2/3 positive vote, and that was not 2/3 positive vote. Motion to suspend the rules fails. We are back to our original motion as amended, and that is to rebuild or to add on to our three, and update our three high schools. Smyrna, notice I said Smyrna first, if you're Bulldogging, you know it. Oakland and Riverdale. Please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change their vote, they may do so now.
Record the vote.
18 yes, 3 no.
Motion passes.
Next thing on our agenda is, as our finance director has already explained, is a resolution authorizing the issuance of interfund capital outlay notes. And we do this before we go to bond market, so we don't have to borrow money and then borrow money again later. Resolution. A resolution authorizing the issuance of interfund bond anticipation notes in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million of Rutherford County, Tennessee. Resolve this 13th day of April 2023. Mr. Chairman, I saw move.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Sharino, questions and comments? Have anything else to add? Fine, nothing. Commissioner Oliver?
Yes, just for clarity, where does this money come from? Is this unassigned fund balance?
No, so this will be money out of our fund balance in our General Debt Service Fund that we will move to the Schools Capital Projects Fund 189 in the interim for the next three months, and then we'll move it back to our General Debt Service Fund 151 when the bonds are issued.
Other questions? If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
18 yes, 3 no.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes budgets business. Our next meeting will be May the 4th.
May the 4th. Thank you. Public safety, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, we really don't have any report, but our next meeting date will be April 24th at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. April 24th. Health and Education Committee Chairman Philip Dodd.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Likewise, no report. Thank you for that vote tonight. Otherwise, our next meeting will be April 25th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in these chambers.
Thank you. April 25th. Property Management Chairman Allen McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had spoken to you earlier about the suspension of the rule, but at that time, we were coming out of property management with this display passing 100%. We had no opposition that particular night from no one on the project. So therefore, during public comment tonight, we had opposition brought up against the project. So based on what was presented to us, we need to get together with the opposition and the ones that are for it, and see can we iron out what they do not like in this resolution. So therefore, I will not be asking for that tonight. Only thing I will be telling you is that I'm making a request to send it back to Property Management Committee, and if any commissioner want to come to Property Management Committee meeting and present their opinion, fine. If you know anybody in your districts or whatever that want to come up and present their opposition, whether they for or against, that's fine. So we will be discussing it in our next Property Management Committee meeting, and that date is April 27th at 5:30 PM in this room. Thank you.
The resolution will go back to property management for additional discussion before it's brought to the full commission, and that meeting will be held on April 27th. Thank you, Chairman McAdoo. Commissioner P.
I just wanted to thank Chairman McAdoo. Thank you for doing what you just did, but I want to make a quick statement. It's not often that we see someone with the courage and fortitude to stand in front of this body and say the things that she said. And I haven't known Lisa very long. Most of us hadn't, but you certainly earned my respect tonight. But thank you for what you said. Now, after I hear and see what they present, we may disagree, but I fully support you in saying what you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner P. Public Works and Planning Chairman Mike Kusch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no report, but I do believe that there's been a typo on the dates for Public Works and the next committee which is steering. Typically, Public Works is, would be the first Tuesday after the first Monday, so I believe, Craig, are you, are you in agreement that if you, if you look on the report here, it says yours is May 2nd? I believe yours is May 1st and mine is May 2nd. Yeah, so Public Works and Planning is actually May 2nd at 5:30. Steering and Legislative will be May 1st at 5:30.
Those are backwards. Thank you for catching that. Public Works will meet on the 2nd, which will be a Tuesday. Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee Chairman Craig Harris.
We're meeting on the 1st, 5:30 here.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. Other business, we've got a couple of things that are coming up, and Commissioner Oliver, if you would move to suspend the rules, tell us why.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move to suspend the rules to discuss a resolution in support of Governor Lee and the adoption of an order of protection laws.
Have a motion to suspend the rules?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules to allow a resolution to present it, be presented by Commissioner Oliver, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to suspend the rules carries. Commissioner Oliver? Please do.
Is this on? Can you hear me? Okay, I can't hear myself. But thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate your time. This was brought to my attention, and I'm sure everybody's aware of the news regarding Covenant School shooting and our governor's position on that. And several constituents brought this to my attention, that they were requesting that this body show a sign of support of our governor, and I was in agreement with that. And so I wanted to bring this to your attention, and I can read this for you, and then you guys can, of course, decide if we want to do it. Whereas, since the terrible events that took place at the Covenant School in Nashville on March 27th, 2023, that left three children and three adults dead, has brought a renewed focus on the safety of children both at home and at school. Whereas, based on the Centers for Disease Control data, the leading cause of death for persons ages 1 through 18 is a firearm in the United States. Whereas, the state of Tennessee is not immune from the continued proliferation of gun violence, and has seen firearms as the leading cause of death of persons ages 1 through 18 in three of the last four measured years. three of the last four measured years. Whereas, order of protection laws, which are also known as red flag laws, allow law enforcement or family members to petition a court to temporarily remove firearms from individuals who are deemed to pose a significant risk of harm to themselves or others. These laws enable the temporary removal of firearms from individuals who may be in crisis, such as those exhibiting signs of mental illness, violence, or dangerous behavior. Order of protection laws are designed to prevent individuals who are at risk of harming themselves or others from accessing firearms, thus reducing the risk of gun-related tragedies. Whereas, safe storage laws, on the other hand, require gun owners to securely store their firearms when not in use, typically the gun safes, lock boxes, or trigger locks. These laws aim to prevent unauthorized access to firearms, particularly by minors, criminals, or individuals who are prohibited from process, excuse me, possessing firearms. Safe storage laws promote responsible gun ownership by encouraging gun owners to properly secure their firearms to prevent theft, accidents, and misuse. Whereas, the adoption of order of protection and safe storing laws, safe storage laws can be effective strategies to address gun violence by reducing access to firearms in high-risk situations and promoting responsible firearm storage practices. These laws can help prevent tragedies involving firearms, particularly among children and adolescents, by providing mechanisms to temporarily remove firearms from individuals who pose risk and by promoting safe firearm storage practices at home. Whereas, our Tennessee Governor Bill Lee has called for the General Assembly to pass an order of protection law that will provide the broader population cover and safety from those who are a danger to themselves or to the population. Whereas, by adopting this resolution, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners is demonstrating a commitment to protect the safety of children and addressing the issues of gun violence in our state and communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that it respectfully requests the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation to propose a bill or bills that will adopt order of protection laws for the state of Tennessee, as well as adopt safe storage laws in order to reduce the amount of gun violence in our state and to protect the children of the state. Be it further resolved, that this resolution be forwarded to the appropriate county officials to the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation and others as deemed proper.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion. There's no second. The motion dies for lack of a second. I would suggest that this resolution be sent to Steering Committee for further discussion and then brought back as the Steering Committee sees fit to the full commission. Does that make sense? Commissioner Johnson.
I agree, Mr. Chairman. This is totally against protocol. We have committees to run these things through. We have county mayor's office. We have our attorney that looks at all of these, and to my knowledge, and nothing against you, Commissioner.
Oh, it's not personal.
My knowledge, this has never been done, a resolution just brought up on the floor, because protocol is, you take it to committee, you discuss it, it goes through the mayor's office, comes back to commission to be voted on. We're all in the dark on this, and there again, it's nothing against you, it's just, it's just protocol, and I mean, we've been kind of beaten up with that since we've been in office, and, and it's a lot of talk on that, so we need to stay along, just, just running the ship, you know, correctly, and to take this to Steering would be appropriate.
I appreciate your comments. I anticipated the rule of the two-thirds vote to suspend the rules, and so that was what Chairman Harris had brought before us before. If we wanted to bring something to the floor, that we would request, you know, that didn't happen, but that was the protocol that I was following, that, that change that was recently made. Thank you.
Also, one other business. Our county attorney has a couple of things that needs to bring to our attention. One is some proposed, a proposed resolution to allow us to apply for disaster relief funds, and the other one will be on a particular topic that some of us may be misunderstanding that deals with conflict of interest. So I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules to allow our county attorney to discuss these two topics.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of that motion to suspend the rules, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to suspend the rules carries.
Thank you, Chairman. Just briefly, the first item is not for the application of, for the county to apply for disaster relief funds, but it involves a lease agreement that was presented to me by the county mayor's office earlier this week. I believe the Small Business Association of the federal government had reached out to the mayor's office asking for utilization of a room upstairs on the third floor to set up shop for a period of approximately 60 days and staffing of about three to four of their SBA employees to meet with residents that were affected by the tornado-ridden areas in the county to apply for disaster relief assistance. Mayor, did I get that right?
You did. The Cannon-Rutherford County area, as a result of the tornado, has been declared a disaster and is eligible for FEMA money. As you know, Rutherford County in Reedable did an absolutely phenomenal job. Public Works Department, roads, fire, EMS, law enforcement, I mean, they did, indeed, some of the commissioners went out there and visited the area, and they did an absolutely unbelievable job, not just in Rutherford County, but they carried the load in Cannon County, too. And we did that without the foreknowledge of whether or not we were going to get FEMA assistance, which is really impressive. But we did, so we, we qualified for disaster relief, and so part of that disaster relief is that the SBA, the Small Business Association, reached out to me and said, hey, do you have some office space that we can use temporarily for up to 60 days to process SBA loans for homeowners and businesses affected by the tornado? We have to move very, very quickly, literally in a matter of 72 hours, I reached out to Nick, and so this is the result of that, with the hope that we, they can begin processing loans as early as tomorrow. We're going to tentatively use the, the third floor office in the courthouse that's available, room 303, and Adam Dodd will be assisting them with the appropriate furniture. So that's, that's where we're at.
Thank you. And just a last follow-up, you'll see on your iPads under the Other Business tab that there is a short form, one-page lease agreement. Notably, it is a no-cost agreement, so the county would not be charging SBA to rent this space for us or from us, and this just memorializes formally the lease agreement with SBA. What I would suggest, if the body is willing to entertain this and allow the mayor to sign this lease on behalf of the county so that the SBA can get in there, someone could please make a motion to approve the form of this lease, subject to county attorney approval and giving the mayor the authority to sign it.
We need a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Now discussion. We have a motion and a second to sign a lease. Anyone, once again, have any comments or any questions? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Is there any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The second item, I was asked just to briefly recite the conflict of interest laws as we get into budget season that's upon us. A few years ago, there were amendments to the conflict of interest laws, and the one I want to speak about on today is, it pertains to if there are any commissioners that are employees or they have spouses that are employees of the county, there is a particular statute, TCA 5-5-112, that would apply to your ability or inability to vote on certain measures, and here's the important part, that would increase the pay or benefits of either you, if you're an employee, or your spouse, if she or he is employee, an employee. This also would apply to retirees who are commission members or spout, or members whose spouses are retirees who receive retirement benefits. The important thing here is if you are an employee or if your spouse is an employee or a retiree, you only have to abstain from voting if the, if the specific measure is before you that increases your, the pay or benefits that directly affect you. If it pertains to other aspects, like for example, if you had a spouse that was an employee at Smyrna High, and today was the issue of whether to fund the additions, that doesn't directly affect or increase the pay or benefits to your spouse, so you can go ahead and vote on that and not abstain. And so I just wanted to clarify that for everybody moving forward. The last thing I wanted to say is even if you find yourself in a scenario where you have to abstain because the, the specific measure that you're voting on increases the payer benefits, that does not preclude you come June to vote on the whole budget package and the tax levy. You can still vote on that, you just can't vote on the specific measure, line item that would be presented to you before that time. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you don't want to ask them here, you can, you can call my office, I'm happy to answer them as well.
Any questions for clarification? Commissioner Kush.
Nick, for clarification, refresh everybody's memory. If, if you are in a position, whether you would gain from a pay increase or benefits increase, do you still have the ability to debate it on the floor?
I think the circumstances are fact specific, but if you were asking me, just me and you having lunch together, I'd probably say it's probably smart to just stay out of it, to not influence the vote either way, because you don't want any argument that someone could make that there's some sense of impropriety, you've tried to sway the vote to directly benefit you. The instances come, are not, they're few and far between, and it's not, I don't even know how many of y'all are even employees of the county in some capacity, or it's more likely you have a spouse that might be than if the actual member is, but anyway.
Other questions? Thank you for that update. Shout-outs. Commissioner P.
Well, we were just talking about Reedable. That's my address, where most of these storm damages occurred. It's right at two miles from my house. A lot of people have asked me if we had any damage, and I said, no, I couldn't even tell that a limb had fell out of a tree. We did have a spectacular light show, but other than that, no damage, and I was sleeping pretty well until Commissioner Beverly called me and woke me up and said, hey, I'm out here chasing the storm down, trying to help people out. At any rate, the reason I stood up is to say thank you to everyone that has gone out of their way to help us in our community. Most of the damage that you see was done in Cannon County. However, there's a lot you didn't see on TV that did occur. I've had friends that lost businesses, that lost their homes, you know, friends that were laying in bed, and next thing, they were looking up at clear sky over their head where they had their roof over their head a moment or two before that. But to kind of tell you how that works, it doesn't surprise me with the people that came out and helped. I was a volunteer firefighter for 15 years with Kitterell, and let me tell you how it usually worked. You know, we did training, we did that training on our own, took it out of our own pocket. We were really happy to do that. When we did go to a fire, a lot of times, you'd get a call and a house would be gone, completely, complete devastation, a lot like we've seen in Reedable here. But we'd put that fire out, and then usually we'd take a collection, and we'd make up money because these people just lost everything they had, except maybe the clothes on their back. I've seen some of them come out barefooted, but not only did we pay for our own training and go over and help these guys, then we'd give them money to boot. We didn't ask for pay, and that's what volunteerism is all about. That's what makes me proud to be a Tennessean, and saying that name, being a volunteer, whether you like UT or not, you know, that's in our blood. That goes back, what, was that the Spanish-American War? Where's, where's Mr. Tucker at? But I think it, we had so many volunteers from Tennessee that they couldn't accept any from hardly anywhere else, and that's where we picked up that name. But anyway, again, from the people of Reedable and our area, I want to give a heartfelt thanks to all the public servants that have been helping us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner P.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, Commissioner Reed.
Commissioners, you're going to hear it again. I want to give a shout-out to the diamond in the west, to Iggleville area. I was out there this past Monday, and they broke ground on a brand-new public safety center. They're getting ready to spend $7 million on a public safety center out there for their fire department and their police department, and I'd have to say it was first-class, if anything I'd, I've ever seen out there. They did a wonderful job, we had a lot of turnout, they had television there to, to report the fact that that municipality out west of here is getting ready to, to do this, and, and I just want to say congratulations to them preparing to do this. And while I'm shouting out to them and following Commissioner P there, our county was hit twice that evening. In fact, out there towards Iggleville, we had an F-1 tornado that actually was the same tornado that left Iggleville, went from there to Reedable. In fact, at 1:15 that same night, or that morning, I started getting phone calls from some of you wanting to know if I was okay, so evidently, most of you were sitting up watching where it was going and what it's doing, and a lot of you knew I was on Mount Pleasant Road, and you knew where it was going, because they were asking to see what was happening out there. The tornado began over in Chapel Hill, where it flipped a train over, went down Beasley Road, it completely blew up a, a silo over there, carried the top of that silo over to 99 into District 8. It went down Rigsby Road over to Bunker Hill. It hit several houses in there, and then come on Bunker Hill down Mount Pleasant. We, we didn't have the damage that Reedable and out towards Kitterell had, due to the fact it went through woodlands, and it looked like a bush hog went through there. What it did to us is the fact we couldn't get to houses over there because it went through this wooded area, and it took us forever to cut out the roads, and we had the same situation. But I want to say congratulations to Iggleville, who jumped in there and cleaned that area out and helped those individuals with their homes and things of that type. Something interesting about that, as people were calling, that tornado, it went a total of 12 and a half miles on the ground once it left Chapel Hill. It lifted at a fence row of my farm and come over the top of my house. In fact, I get a call from my daughter, and she calls and says, Daddy, are you in your safe room? She knew better. I told her, I said, no. She said, I figured that. I said, my only safe room is an inside bathroom, and I'm not about to die in a bathtub or a commode. I said, I'm in the sunroom, and I'm watching this thing, and she listened to me the whole time, and that tornado was over the top of me. And I said, you ought to see this, I'm sitting in the eye right now. I have a weather station inside there that I watch things. I saw the wind drop to nothing, I saw the barometer drop to nothing, and I saw the eye of a tornado, and I can prove it. I'm getting a new roof in the next few weeks for my house, but what I'm telling, and just as Commissioner P has said here, the volunteers within Rutherford County are something else, and that's what we've seen over there. It's something to see the people of this county and what they do when problems and trouble comes out. In fact, I was with our county rescue squads and our fire departments on my road, helping a family that had lost the roof to their house and whatever, and we got the call out there about what was happening in Reedable, and we knew then it was terrible up that way. So those of us that have watched the storms and seen what's happening, we're very fortunate of what's going here. I think I've, I heard from someone that said that within Rutherford County, since 1960, we've had 42 tornadoes within this county. we've had forty-two tornadoes within this county. So I think it's important that people look at the fact and remember and take, take care when these things are happening. But I want to say, we really appreciate our emergency personnel in this county.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Carr.
Thank you. I'll be brief. So when the tor, so when the tornadoes hit Saturday morning, our law enforcement, Sheriff Fitzhugh and his staff, Chief Farley and his crew, I'm EMS, EMA, everybody was on the scene before sunup, not just in Rutherford County, but Cannon County. Literally Cannon County had no resources, literally no resources. By Saturday afternoon, Bishop Wagner, Solid Waste, had open containers on site. Greg Brooks had his road crews out there and talking, and immediately Bishop and Greg took command of the situation after the search and rescue was over with regard to cleanup. It was really, really impressive. I got an estimate from Bishop and Greg that they thought they would be out there for anywhere from three to four weeks. They left Monday afternoon. They got that place cleaned up in a little over a week, eight days to be exact. It was an absolute phenomenal effort. What was really inspiring, and Greg Brooks and Bishop Wagner will tell you this, what was really inspiring is there's a Mennonite community in Cannon, Warren, and DeKalb County. And they showed up en masse with probably a dozen pieces of heavy equipment. And you talk about a group of people going to work and getting it done, and they asked for nothing. And so I've never seen a set of, a group of volunteers respond in such a coordinated way as that Mennonite community from DeKalb, Warren, and Cannon County. And because of that, and it was just, everything was just so efficient. I would go out there and I would just, it was literally, and what we will do, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, OIT, and a great shout-out to OIT, Mike Curtis did daily drone flyovers. And we will present, with your permission, at the next county commission meeting, a time-lapse photography of the cleanup that happened over those ten, ten days or so, if that's, if that's acceptable to you.
It is.
Because I want to illustrate how much debris was removed and in the fashion it was removed and the cooperative effort that it was undertaken. But my point being this, I'm going to come to this body with a request to make a donation to that Mennonite community because of the work that they did. And I will let you hear the firsthand stories of the time and money they spent, and they asked for nothing. And I think it's, it's a tribute to them, it's a tribute to this county and the people who are in positions of leadership. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Beverly.
I, like many of you guys, were up that night of the tornado. And at two in the morning, I was standing in the middle of Elam Road in Mount Taber with a giant cedar tree that got knocked over. But I wasn't by myself, there were many of my neighbors over there with tractors, backhoes, bushhogs, and a skid steer to get the road cleaned up so a Christiana Volunteer Fire Department truck could come through running emergency traffic. But there's an avenue of that night that a lot of people didn't realize. If you listen to the scanner, calls were going out, which means somebody was there to take those calls. And this week is National Telecommunicator Week. And everywhere in the unincorporated part of this county and in every municipality, 24/7/365, dispatchers are there to answer our calls. I just want to thank them for their service because we could not do it without them. So let's give them a round of applause. I'll be honest, I never, you don't often give a round of applause to somebody telling you what to do, but here, here we are. They tell me what to do forty hours a week. So from there, I want to also give a shout-out or more of a recognition, the first-ever District Six Community Forum will be on April 17th at New Vision Buchanan Campus at 6:00 PM. I'm partnering with Caleb Tidwell, who's Vice Chair of the School Board, and Michael Shirley, who is our road board rep, to do a Q&amp;A session. We're each going to do a quick presentation, but to promote some communication and transparency, we're going to open ourselves up for questions as to what's going on with our county. I'm sure with what we voted on tonight is going to be a hot topic, but I am ready to defend schools. So Smyrna, congratulations, you showed up. We're proud to support you guys.
Thank you, Commissioner Beverly. Anyone else? Commissioner James.
Well, I still have some, some questions, some concerns. And I wanted to at least leave the earworm for others to, as I searched some answers on them, because as I'm looking at it year after year, we're going to keep adding more additions, more additions. And I keep going back to when are we going to start thinking outside the box on these? I'm, I'm glad and I'm thankful that Smyrna was added. That was the right thing. I'm worried about the price tag. That's my concern overall. I mean, I have overall questions that aren't concerning on that. I'm concerning about, like for example, how much would it cost just to remove all the portables county-wide? And these are just rhetorical, to help find your own answer, because I'm, I'm still going to search for these answers. With these passed, with the two-year build plan, how long after opening day until the portals, portables are back? Are they actually going to leave? You know, it, it just sounds like we need a new high school, I need really planned and look at that. I wonder how much it costs to build a new school complex, since we're still building on average a school a year, year and a half. We've got the land, or they own the land out in Walter Hill. The argument would be that maybe the growth's not necessarily over there. But I would counter that with saying, you know, if you put the infrastructure in place, the growth will follow. It'd be a good idea to start balancing the growth of this county. I mean, how much would Christiana grow if we put a sewer system out there? Yes, everything takes money, yes, everything, but it takes a lot more long-term thinking, in my opinion. So these are some of the things I'm curious about. Then I start wondering, if it's really about safety, take Blackman Elementary. You've got thirteen acres next to it, you could build on, build on quick, but the entire fifth grade is in portables and they're getting more. It's, these are the things that, that I'm, I'm wondering, I'm wanting to get answers on. And so until I get these answers, I'm weary on spending the money, so much money, that we're going to have to raise taxes just to cover that expense, when we're looking at already the potential, as Chairman says, of raising taxes regardless. And I, I just want to be wiser about what we're doing. I'd like to start thinking outside the box and start planning for the, the longer term so we can give our taxpayers a, a chance to take a breath and play catch-up. And that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Any other comments, any other shout-outs here, real quick? Remember, you guys, we put shout-outs here to compliment, to recognize, and they need to be one minute or less. Tonight was an exception with some extremely important volunteerism, so we let it go on a little bit more. Shout-outs are just that, to shout out your appreciation for something, someone, or son group, as, as does. McMurray, Commissioner McMurray.
Well, sorry, this is a shout-out graduation in regards to the 16th Judicial District Recovery Court graduation, April 24th at 10:30 AM. So just wanted to put that out there.
So noted, thank you.
I would like to, Mr. Chair, shout-out Michael Gregory, our PAWS Director, who is hosting a doggone adoption event this Saturday from 10 to 3:00. Now, there's going to be activities, which will include face painting, photo booths, games, giveaway, food trucks, and just a bunch of stuff. And they're going to be providing free popcorn in a watering hole. And all adoptions will be at no cost during this event, 10 to 3:00, Saturday.
Very important, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for your patience, your time, your attendance tonight. Our next meeting will be Thursday, May the 11th, in this courthouse. Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.